We will call this meeting to order. It's a work session for the Plan Commission. Scheduled to begin at 5:30. And we will take a roll just to see that we have everyone here. Mr. Seymour. Greggert.
Here.
Granlund.
Just made it.
Okay. Kristofferson.
Here.
Wolfgramm.
Here.
Obaid.
Here.
And it looks like the only one we're missing is Mary Proznick. Oh, there she is. Got to make her a panelist. Mary, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you, I'm here.
Okay, great. So let's begin. Mr. Allen, did you want to go through?
Sure. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're starting with, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Follow-up question and comments from September 29th work session.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Leave everyone sent separately the meeting notes. Again, not technically minutes per se, but meeting notes from the meeting of last time. And if Ryan could hold up there, I've actually got them all here just a moment. Sorry, bear with us a moment. While we pull the meeting notes. Sorry, I'm going to pull this open. Yeah, it's a separate document. Sorry about that. So at the last meeting, which was September 29th, we staff provided a walkthrough of the assessment that we've been working on for off and on throughout the summer, looking at the Plan Implementation Program or Chapter 15 in the conference plan. And we walked through the basics of that and essentially tried to highlight some of our checklist items that we had gone through and identified those that are still in process, kind of gave a ranking, thanks to Ned for, kind of giving a scorecard, kind of a one, two, or three, if that's right, of whether something has really not been worked on or is kind of in process or complete. So with that, we tried to provide a list of, kind of a summary list of the items that were brought up at that meeting in your notes. Again, it's just a one-pager, but we have items A through I, go to the bottom, Ryan, of this document. This is not the correct document. Ignore this document entirely. It was in the same folder. I'll go through those verbally while Ryan tries to find that. It's in that same folder. It's PC Work Session Meeting Notes. So some of those were, again, we went through kind of table by table. There are really about five or so tables that had some substantive comments that we included here in terms of transportation plan, parks, trails, and greenways plan, natural resources plan, housing plan, downtown plan, kind of the main ones that kind of emphasized with the discussion then. Overall, one of the comments was to ask staff to kind of put some more details into that Plan Implementation Program, the Chapter 15 tables. Again, it's really trying to pull in the policy direction, kind of goals and objectives from each of the chapters and just trying to make it a fairly basic list, if you will, for moving forward for 2015 to 2025. But certainly that's something that would be useful is to add some additional kind of details to that. So, you know, a user could pull that Chapter 15 out and really kind of have almost an executive summary, kind of a full picture of, you know, where the Plan Commission is looking to head with these different items and not have to kind of bounce back and forth with each chapter. Additional information included, you know, provide some additional updated data, especially focusing on housing. And then somehow, you know, try to weave in some of the acknowledging impacts from the current viral pandemic. So those are kind of the, just a quick walkthrough of some of the items that came up. With that, wonder if there are any other questions or comments that we missed or things that I'd like to make sure we acknowledged from your first work session.
Any questions or comments from the Commission at this point? I see none. And then to review the Council's strategic plan and the 2020 Commission work plan.
Yes.
How do those things aid with what we've been discussing for plan review?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, again, these were items that were referenced at the, your last work session, and wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to review those and see how they connected in with the conference plan. Another item that we've been looking at are all of the different boards and commission work plans. I know Ned and Ryan have been trying to kind of gather a lot of those together. They vary, as you can imagine, from group to group. For example, Landmarks Commission has a pretty brief, I'll say brief, but it is kind of, you know, it's a one-page kind of list of activities and projects and programs they'd like to work on. Yours, for example, Plan Commission, you know, is several pages pulled from the Conference of Plan. Some other boards and commissions have more kind of a table format where they kind of go through specific items they want to review each year. So with that, the City Council's strategic plan is a newer one. I'm not saying new, it's, you know, it's over a year old now, but actually it was adopted just last November, so we're just shy of a year old, but it had been worked on for almost a full year. I know the City Council members on the Plan Commission could certainly speak to this a little bit more detail as needed, but it did lay out seven different, seven, excuse me, seven, not several, but seven is several. Seven strategic goals and objectives focused on supporting economic prosperity. I'll let Ryan jump over to that if you don't mind, to the presentation here. Again, we just have the next page or two, couple pages to go, one more. Thank you. Perfect. Supporting economic prosperity, providing safe, functional, accessible infrastructure, optimizing potential organizational item, develop, nurture, and revitalize, again, focused on neighborhoods, facilitate community, create engaging opportunities, and the last one, just kind of look off here, nurture opportunities for personal growth. So again, happy to spend some time and go through each of these if you'd like to see how they might be tied into this review, but there are certainly things that are pretty reflective of the Conference of Plan. The Conference of Plan was utilized in formulating these strategic goals and objectives. So I would like to think that there was some good crossover and connections already being made with this document, but certainly open to any conversation about any specific items that the Commission would like to address. So I'll kind of turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, and then I'll talk about the, your work program for this year.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the Plan Commission regarding our consistency with the strategic goals for the city? Mr. Greggert.
Thank you, Chair Morrison. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Yeah, I see our, provided in the packet for this meeting is the strategic goals and objectives and then the strategic plan summary sheet after that, that's just a one-pager. So there's the, essentially a, let's see, I think it's a five-pager plus a one-pager. I guess what I was kind of interested in in bringing this up is that there's also a more detailed version of the, of the plan that has like specific ideas. Some of them came from staff, some of them came from City Council members, and they got pretty fine-grained, I guess you could say, but I haven't seen those really as like a public document necessarily or on the city website or necessarily approved, you know. I feel like the documents that we have in front of us are the ones that went in front of City Council, but it may be helpful to look at the, those more specific ideas to see how they fit in with the strategic plan because this seems, or with the comprehensive plan, I should say. Because when we get down to the work plan part of the comprehensive plan, that's where those specific ideas go. And so I guess I just wanted your perspective on that, you know, for our discussion today.
Mr. Allen.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Greggert. I'm trying to recall as well, I know there's kind of a lot of kind of behind-the-scenes work, as it were, to put together these different groupings of different tasks and such. I know any of those did come from the Conference of Plan, as you noted as well. I can certainly deliver more research on that. I too am unsure of the kind of public nature of that, only because I know it was kind of more draft in terms of helping inform these different strategic goals and objectives. So I can certainly circle back on that and just see what, if any, of those details we can pull together for the Commission. And again, I should note too, Mr. Chair, this is a work session for the Commission in terms of, you know, having these conversations more corporately, but, you know, I'm happy to, you know, provide any kind of materials via email or what have you as well, so you can certainly email that out, Commissioner Greggert, as, you know, find that too. You don't necessarily have to wait until November to see that, but assuming it doesn't take until November to find all of that. So with that, yeah, we can certainly look into that. But I do recall as well, there's, there are kind of some little bit extended tables that went with each of those kind of color-coded items.
You might be talking about, well, let me say this, it sounded like, Commissioner Greggert, that you were talking about a document that maybe isn't available to the public. Is that what you meant?
Well, it is something that, you know, was discussed and curated during publicly noticed meetings, it just hasn't necessarily been, you know, I think, you know, the ideas in there are, you know, categorized underneath these various strategic goals. And I think maybe from the, I think like we might want to seek guidance from City Manager Peters on exactly how to roll them out maybe as part of, you know, consideration within the comprehensive plan context, I guess in his final couple days at the city. Because there's a, I think they would be helpful. And they just go a little bit, they just go more finer grain than what we have in front of us, which I think for right now, like this is fine because this is maybe enough to consume at this juncture, but then as we start to talk about specific work plan items for the comprehensive plan, it seems like, you know, going off of what, you know, some of the work that has already occurred in the City Council and staff work sessions on the strategic plan, it may make sense. I'm not sure if a Council member, Kristofferson, would have a perspective on that too, as someone who went through that process.
Well, I think if there's a document out there that, it sounds like an issue that the City Council should resolve as to whether they want to make whatever this document is you're referring to, a public-facing document. But in the meantime, if it's something that's available to you and you feel there's something in there that should be part of this discussion, I hope you'll bring that up and bring it into the discussion. Commissioner Kristofferson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to maybe ask a question of Commissioner Greggert. I'm not, I'm not sure what the ultimate goal is that raises this question for him, but in my experience as staff and council, creating this strategic, the strategic goals, there was, it felt to me as a new council member, kind of a first experience of aligning what the staff goals and what the council goals were in strategic actions. And I think what Commissioner Greggert is saying is that we don't want to lose that alignment, and it might help, and maybe it would be, Commissioner Greggert and I, it might be our responsibility, I don't know, to actually look at the work plan and see if we are prioritizing our work in the same way that the council and the staff had, instead of just assuming that what's coming forward from five years ago has that same prioritization. So that would be the only thing I would add, and if that is something that our experience in that work session would help the Plan Commission to do, I would receive that, that direction. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think that makes both of your input very important in this process because we certainly want to be in line with the direction that the City Council is setting forth, you know, for the city, so. Okay.
May I, Mr. Chair, just to kind of conclude that from staff's perspective? And Ryan, if you want, you can go back, I think, to the second page of this. If you look at the plan element, it's page two of the strategic plan. There you go. Thank you. The bottom there talks about strategies or tactics, the how, and how the ownership responsibilities of the City Manager, meaning essentially, you know, City Manager and the City Manager's staff, that looking at operational tasks or projects that staff is working on to achieve the objectives. So I know there's a lot of the how that I'm sure, you know, the Plan Commission through the various work plans, which is also why we were reviewing the other boards and commissions, their work plans, to see how these, these hows align, again, not just with the City Council strategic plan, but then also with the Conference of Plan as well. But so again, that's a little bit maybe where that, that kind of piece fits in that we're talking about here, but certainly, as you're saying, Mr. Chair, yeah, deferring to the two council members who serve on the Commission here to provide some additional feedback and guidance, and that would be great.
Any other comments about the strategic plan and the direction we're going here? If not, we will move on to item number three, an update of the Implementation Program Assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I do that, just a real quick recap of the, your Plan Commission work program. We can certainly go item by item on that. This is under item two, sorry, but I didn't want, I want to make sure we didn't skip that entirely, but there's quite a bit that has been completed or is in the works even with a pandemic in our midst. So, you know, certain things in here that wanted to call out that are, that are done on your work program. The first one is kind of an ongoing thing in that, that has those all been done, apart from the housing affordability analysis, which Ryan will have that done, I think, next week. No, that's this quarter, so that's something that was new last year, so we're, that's the only thing left to accomplish there. Staff reports, I think we've made some tweaks and revisions throughout the year, not just to the logo, but to other parts, but we may see some additional changes to that in the next year. Training, again, we're trying to provide some additional training opportunities, but obviously with other things going on, it's been a little difficult. And then the permit software update was completed earlier this year, and then we do have some planning side of that. We actually have a meeting again next week, kind of make sure that's getting sorted out. The housing infill redevelopment inventory is currently being kind of framed up with some help from our intern from the university, and again, that's already, it says here, fourth quarter, and that is currently getting started. You have your 2015 comp plan, five-year update. Again, I should clarify terminology, that should say review. And again, that's something we are working on here in fourth quarter. And Ned is here and can take credit for the next three items, or the next two items, excuse me, being entirely completed and presented actually at the Upper Midwest Planning Conference last week, so good work on that. Renewable Energy Action Plan and the Net Zero Energy Construction Guide. Affordable Housing Policy and Ordinance, again, the Housing Opportunities Commission, that too, also last week, for the first time, so there's work, obviously, that'll be coming out of that group. Next page, we have Affordable Housing Fund, that too, the item that the Commission, the Housing Opportunities Commission will be looking at. Parking Standards, that's something that is still the list to look into. I know, again, Ned's been working on the SSTI project and report that he presented in your last work session, speaks somewhat to this. The next three items are ones that are in the works, but really slow in getting a foothold simply because of the pandemic. So participatory budgeting, it's been pushed formally to next year. Block seven, actually have a design that was put together through the Economic Development Division, and so there's a little more work on the city side, it's been worked on, bless you. And the liner site is, we're seeing some designs coming forward with that as well for Chulles Museum. The other items are still unfinished and still as a potential work items, perhaps to get pushed to next year. The boundary agreements is one that does a little more of a formal deadline early next year, and the rest are items that are still kind of on the to-do list that we can consider moving forward. The last piece of the list, the bottom on page three, Neighborhood Planning As Needed. The census is being wrapped up as we speak. Complete Streets Policy is, again, kind of de facto operating already with engineering, but more formal one is kind of in their area. And again, these are things that are related, but not necessarily under the purview or direct input of the Plan Commission, but certainly will have some review perhaps as they come along. Transit Center redevelopment is one as well, that is in the works. Half Moon Lake Management Plan has been completed. And the smart housing program, this is the landlord support program, is actually wrapped up in terms of review, and then we'll be moving forward to City Council here shortly. So when I went through this, as I, as I opened this up and started looking at it, I got a little panicked because I thought, did we get anything done? Before I even looked at anything, I thought, are we going to, am I going to look through this and go, we've not done anything? And I was excited, and we've obviously done plenty, but wanted to make sure it was aligning with the work program, and thankfully it was. So as I just went through here to maybe the second, the bottom half of page two are things that are yet to be done. So considering everything that's been going on, including loss of a 36-year veteran back in August, Mr. Pat Ivory, I think we've done fairly well. So we'll be coming back with a more formal version of this in January, which aligns with our, kind of our timeline here, with the Conference of Plan Review. So all that to say that, again, that's, that would be ideal if they don't necessarily match up, that's not, it's kind of just at your own pace. It's a preferred option, but not necessarily the only one. And so with that, Mr. Chair, sorry to belabor that point, but item three then, update of the Plan Implementation Program Assessment. We provided a version of that, again, for your review, the last piece of your agenda package. So I'll let Mr. Petrie jump to that. Thank you. We've, that made a lot of kind of updates or changes to this. I'll let Ned or Ryan jump in if there are any pieces you wanted to highlight in particular, but I do not have any much to add other than what we've already been talking about in a less formal fashion.
Forgive me if you covered this, but can you explain what is a form-based code? And can you just, do that a little bit?
Yeah, that is on, I think, the second page of the work program.
Second page, yeah. Identify pilot area project in historic Randall Park neighborhood for FBC implementation form-based codes.
Correct. Yeah, this is one, an item that we had been looking at as, as you see, again, different housing uses occur, in particular in a historic Randall Park neighborhood, for example, with a lot of university housing. And what form-based code does is essentially, instead of focusing on land use with zoning, it focuses on form, so the old form over function versus function over form. But meaning, it's a way to create a design code essentially for zoning that would allow you different types of housing, meaning, you know, not just all single-family detached owner-occupied housing, but a block-by-block approach that can make that block look like single-family detached housing, but still have, you know, one unit, one property, one structure is, you know, a triplex, another is duplex, another is single-family, but they are all more consistently formed. And that's what, that's one example of what a form-based code can do. So it focuses on design and aesthetics and how the site looks versus separating uses in a more traditional fashion.
Okay.
So again, it can be used in residential, it can be used in commercial. Another example, we're looking at possibly doing that in the Canary District where we've had that redevelopment plan, I'd say we being through the Redevelopment Authority, a redevelopment plan that looks at like a maker district. Well, can there be a building that looks a little more commercial in nature, but provide for some, you know, artisan-style manufacturing or something like that?
Okay.
And that could, again, can benefit from a form-based code approach versus a traditional, you know, land use separation approach.
And that is a pilot project that's underway right now?
It is not, no. We're still in the ongoing research piece, and it says pilot project for third quarter. Again, this was, this is your pre-COVID work plan. That is one that unfortunately had to, had to get put aside for now, but it's still something that we're considering, and even having conversations about other parts of town, perhaps, that you're benefiting from, like I mentioned, Canary District, that could benefit from a form-based code, so.
So in terms of reviewing our comprehensive plan, things like the form-based codes and the short-term rental ordinances and maybe even boundary agreements, we just need to change the dates, the timeline dates because of COVID and the loss of some staff and so on. and so on. Does that sound about right?
That could be the case, Mr. Chair, with, with some of these items as you look at the next, next year's work plan. I think in this regard too, the items that are incomplete, how do those tie into your review here of the Conferences of Plan? For example, there's a direct correlation with the boundary agreements that is scheduled for first quarter of 2021. And that is in the Conferences of Plan and also reflected here in the work plan. And I should have said upfront, I apologize that the chapter five, 15, excuse me, chapter 15 Plan Implementation Program that we're reviewing here in the chart is exactly where we pull the work plan items for the Plan Commission each year as well. So that's one good example of that. Some additional items that have been added, and that's, that's exactly what we're looking for, some guidance as we do this review. You know, short-term rentals ordinance was not necessarily anything in the Conferences of Plan, but there's, there's been an interest from outside parties and, and, you know, within City Hall to, to look at that as an option. That could be a future work item that you, that you end up adding to one of these tables.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly where that would be, but perhaps, you know, under Economic Development Plan Actions, you know, that could be something that could be added. So the things that have not been, I just mentioned here, essentially kind of bottom half of the second page are items that, you know, staff would be asking for some input on, do you want to include those not only in next year's work plan, but that should those be better reflected in the Conferences of Plan Review as we move forward?
Good. Commissioner Christopherson.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm starting to realize that most of my interest is more in the staff level, like, how are you going to do this as opposed to at the commissioner level of policy? But I'm going to ask my question anyway. In this form-based code, it sounds like it has the most application in the core residential areas, Randall Park, north, the north side, the west side of the, of the river. So my question would be, with that, that example or the pilot project, it really could present itself anywhere, I mean, it doesn't have to be around the park, it could be any place that, that just happens to be an example of that, that form of coding, right? If there was something like in the Cannery District or near the Cannery District, that would be just as appropriate as around the park if the financing, if, show itself. Is that right?
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, absolutely. That does not necessarily need to be in Randall Park or exclusively Randall Park. It can be elsewhere in the city. I just know that there was interest from that neighborhood association in exploring this as a, as a possibility. So that's why it was referenced here. But yeah, it could certainly be elsewhere, and that's exactly, that's a great example of is, is that something that, you know, the commission would like to include somewhere, you know, in the next five years or, you know, whatever that timeframe may be to put into the Conferences of Plan, you know, to explore the use of form-based codes in various, you know, developed neighborhoods or core neighborhoods. You know, it can, we can add a little bit more to that, but that's, that's kind of the thing that I, I think we're expecting to see is that kind of additional very specific kind of next steps. You know, what are things that we didn't address in the 2015 comp plan that need to be added? Or were those things that were in the 2015 plan that now have come due and we need to elevate, you know, through this process? But yeah, with form-based codes, I've seen it the most success in kind of infill and redeveloped areas. So that's why, you know, that was given as an example.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
All right. Thank you. And then is there a need for us to go through this long list of?
Item by item.
Item, yeah. I don't think our time allotment will allow for that. Is there anything in those documents? Yeah, if you could call it up on the screen so people know what I'm talking about. Are there any of these action items listed in this table that commissioners want to speak to? Commissioner Gregor.
Thank you, Chair Larson. I, I guess this is a, this is a broader question than, than the example I'm about to bring up is. But what if there's like disagreement in the community or among commissioners about one of these goals, like whether it should even be listed? And it, I think that one of them that, that I may have disagreement with, just based on maybe not knowing enough about the implications of it, is actually under table 15 six, which is the Economic Development Plan Actions. There's a reference to this Cameron interchange, says continue to advocate for building an interchange on I-94 at Cameron Street. Says that, that the DOT said there's no need for it. And it's a number one for that reason presumably. And I guess I'm just, you know, I don't think we spent a ton of money or spent a lot of time like researching the, the need or the practicality of it. I know that the city has set aside land, you know, for a possible interchange or made sure that it's not developed with housing or things like that. But I'm just kind of using it as an example to pick on it a little bit, but not to like outwardly say like 100% against it or anything. It's just, I guess what do we do in that kind of situation as a commission if there's, or as a community as we discuss the, the comprehensive plan if, if it's like, well, I don't know if that's the biggest priority in the world sort of, sort of thing. So just wanted to put that out there for folks.
Right. Well, I think that is an item that's actually been sort of on the radar screen for a number of years. There was a process that was, that sought having approval for that interchange a number of years ago. And DOT, as I understand it, didn't, first of all, the county union was opposed to it. And then DOT didn't see a need for it in terms of traffic movement. But the idea from the city of Eau Claire was that it would give a more direct access to the downtown area from one interchange on the interstate as opposed to having to make several, because our city is laid out so sort of piecemeal. We have a lot of land structures that get in the way. And so we have to kind of find your way downtown and with an interchange at Cameron Street would be a little bit easier. So that speaks to that specific issue. But I understand your question that, so how does the procedure work in terms of if somebody thinks someone, something should be taken off or there's disagreement about what should be put on? How do we deal with that? Hopefully we can build consensus. Short of that, I, I don't know that there's a, a specific plan as to, you know, do we have a motion and a discussion? And we can go to that if an issue comes up where there's some significant disagreement, we can resolve it just through a democratic process, I suppose. But the purpose of this is to, to try and build consensus on, on the direction we want to go. Commissioner Wolfgram.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Larson and Mr. Allen. I might be jumping ahead here, but we're soon, we're soon going to run out of time. So I wanted to know if we're going to address during this work session the bigger process question, how we want to complete our work under the scope of this five-year review, specifically if we want to do a more expanded community engagement approach? I'm not going to go into any more detail than that. Is that something for today or for the next work session?
Well, the, the 10-year, the 10-year, give me the right term, review?
The 10-year update versus the five-year.
Okay. So there, there's two different processes here. The 10-year update, which pulls in as many stakeholders in the community as we can. And typically, I know the last time we had probably 40, a committee of 40-some people representing many different stakeholding entities in the city, including, you know, homelessness, development, rental properties, real, real estate, advocacy of different public issue programs that, that touch on planning for the city. In the five-year review, the midterm review, what we're doing is helping give staff some direction as to what we've accomplished so far and what we need to do because, what we need to do from here to the end of the, the next five years where we do another update. So we will take into account any changes. For example, City Council is constantly changing. They, they write new strategic plans, they set new priorities, and we want our comprehensive plan to be consistent with the direction that the council is taking us and to sort of update our procedures on this. But the next time we have a, a big community input type session will be at the next 10-year update.
Can I ask a quick follow-up?
Yes.
Is, is there any community engagement at all involved in this five-year review?
Well, we, we don't have a, a, a formal meeting where we're, we're engaged with the community in a committee-type setting, no. But what the community has to say to us is certainly taken into account, and I hope that each of our commissioners will bring that to, to the discussion. I know, for example, that you're involved with the Jona Program, which has a big interest in affordable housing. So the, the expertise that you bring to the table, for example, will help a lot in our discussion.
Can I do just one last, I'm sorry, can I do one, one last follow-up?
Sure.
I was referring back to the, you know, and again, this might not be relevant, I believe it is, but I'm, I'm checking it out. I referred back to the March 20th document that Commissioner Christopherson provided and that I supported regarding this, this committee of task forces that would look at these chapters. Is that relevant for this five-year review or is that only relevant to the 10-year?
That would be part of the 10-year update.
Okay, thank you. For now, thank you.
Any other questions or specific items in this, in this project list that we want to discuss? Commissioner Christopherson.
Thank you, Chairperson Larson. I want to just link with the comments that Commissioner Wolfgram made. I don't have more questions that are specific to the work of the staff or of the Plan Commission. But at the, at the beginning of our conversation, it was pre-COVID, and we thought that there'd be some opportunities for us to just bring a greater awareness to the broader community of what the comprehensive plan is and does for the city. And as, as we update, people would, would see the update as opposed to feeling that they had opportunities to have new ideas, but to give them familiarity with the process and help them to interact more fruitfully at the 10-year update. So I, I am more aware now of really what our work is and what we're doing. But I, I do have this comment that I want to make, and that is, just last Friday night, Jeremy and I were on a Zoom plan call with neighborhood associations. And their understanding of the comprehensive plan and how it directs staff and city attention and money is completely in the street to them. And I think between now and the 10-year update, the more times we, as a Plan Commission or as a city, the more times we can educate those neighborhood associations or neighborhood gatherings of what the city is thinking about in their areas would be to our benefit. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is, I had a conversation today with somebody interested in one of the items that's going to be on our agenda tonight, and her comment was, you're just going to do what you want to anyway. And I think that's just an unfortunate interpretation of how the city works. So we've got, we've got an opportunity to kind of modify the way we come to the community with these planning documents, and, and I really, I'd really like to help make it more consumable. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wolfgram.
Thank you, Chairperson Larson. Just, just to add to that, we have a number of underrepresented groups in our community that we need to pay attention to. And I would be very happy also to put in whatever time would be necessary to have the community leaders of those underrepresented groups be able to help us access, increasing the awareness of this plan with those groups. One in particular would be our Munk community. There are many others. So I just want to go on the record of saying is I'm, I'm happy to put in whatever time would be necessary to do that. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Gregor.
Thank you, Chair Larson. Yeah, and I appreciate the focus on outreach. I think one thing I mentioned maybe at our first work session or maybe during one of our discussions prior to having work sessions is the idea of the fact that we have commissions and committees that already focus on a lot of these areas and just finding a way to make sure that, that they, that the relevant chapters or plans within the comprehensive plan get in front of them for input at this juncture would be good. Obviously, we're, Plan Commission is covered in that regard, but I serve on Transit Commission. And, you know, there's the transportation, you know, plan within here. There's the economic development plan. So there's ones that are relevant to, to each commission, obviously, Waterways and Parks and Housing Opportunities Commission. Even, you know, we look at the Downtown Eau Claire Incorporated Board of Directors, you know, that's, that's a place where the downtown plan can go. So just, I'm not exactly sure like the best way to comprehensively make sure that that happens, but I think obviously staff could play a role. But it seems like we already have citizens that are convened and are engaged. And obviously, we need to do more than that, you know, as, as Commissioner Wolfgram mentioned and Councilmember Christopherson with neighborhood associations. But just trying to think of how we can make sure that we're getting the relevant chapters or the whole plan itself in front of the bodies that are already convened or the organizations that already exist in our communities. So, so I'm not sure if Mr. Allen would have thoughts or on that particular approach. so I'm not sure if Mr. Allen would have thoughts or on that particular approach. Obviously, that could take some time. It's a matter of getting things on their agenda, but even if it's, even if they don't end up wanting to dive in super deep, you know, they at least have the opportunity to review and maybe provide comment outside of their meeting if they don't end up having a, a big discussion over it. So, thank you.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things I want to mention before we have Mr. Allen speak is that we're almost out of time here. But so in terms of, you know, whether the plant, organizations like the plant commission or the city council or any of the other committees and commissions on the city are just doing what they want as opposed to what the, the community wants. And I, I don't think that that's what Commissioner Christopherson was saying. She's, as I understand it, Commissioner Christopherson, you want to demonstrate that that's not the case. And, and so do I. How exactly you do that is, is difficult to say because in, oh, 30-some years of public service, I hear that repeatedly, that's sort of a perception of what government is all about and at every level. And as hard as many of us try to change that, it's, it's difficult. So and with regard to public participation in the process, there's, you know, we have now at the direction of the city council a session at the beginning of every meeting where people can come in and talk about any topic they want to that's not on the particular agenda for that night. And Commissioner Wolfgang, if, if there are folks that you can identify who you would like us to hear from, that is an opportunity for them to call in or, you know, participate in the meeting to address topics that are important to them, including the Mung community or the homeless community or the, you know, tenant community, whoever feels like, as long as they're aware that this process is going on, maybe they have some input they, they could like, they would like to share with us and, and we can hear from them. But that's, I know, I understand that's entirely different than a consultant-led discussion where a group is brought together to, to come up with new ideas. That's not what this process, this particular process is about. We want to just make sure that we're on track for the next time that that sort of a process occurs. We're going to have to wrap up pretty quickly here, but Mr. Allen.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I can't really add much more to that. I think that's a clear picture of where we're headed in terms of, again, looking at this table. That's, that's why we wanted to make sure we had kind of the stoplight colors here to show, you know, what things have been really done and if they're ongoing, do, you know, maintain that current level? And, you know, if things are, you know, just a little bit behind or we're kind of just middleish, you know, do we, do we bring those forward? And the same with those are kind of the red or those things like, you know, Commissioner Gregor was saying, I mean, I necessarily just, you know, lob them off and cross them off because, like you're saying, Mr. Chair, that's kind of for the next time, for that bigger review to get that community input to say, you know, the Cameron Street interchange, is that something that this group just wants to cut off? Probably not, but it's something perhaps that just, you know, gets pushed out further for that discussion at that 2025 stage. You know, again, pending kind of consensus on that, just as an example. But exactly, staff's looking for guidance, direction in terms of what are the items that need to be elevated? You know, what are the, you know, neighborhood plans that need to be, you know, pushed forward to make sure are done? You know, Ned can speak to, you know, last time this was done with the health chapter, you know, that was something that was kind of given that boost to go into that next stage. So it's, I almost, as we're talking here, I think of it like a kind of a work plan plus, kind of like a, what's the five-year work plan moving forward, not just for the plan commission, but for the city as a whole. So I, you know, certainly take into account what Commissioner Gregor was also saying about, you know, bringing this forwarding in some review and input from the various boards and commissions as well. That's why we went back as staff to look at their work plans and just make sure, you know, are things, are we, are we as a group, you know, missing something, you know, short-term rental ordinance? Are we missing something like that that needs to be added in and elevated for the next five years? Or wow, they're going through the checklist just great, they're on track, everything's fine. But exactly, I think we can use this, this kind of ranking system here, this assessment system for each of those chapters, go back to, you know, various, you know, committees and, and, you know, and commissions and boards and just get their input. That's certainly, I want to say kind of the next best thing, not to be, you know, to diminish that value, but that may be an opportunity to get that additional, to have external input, if you will, from those groups. But yeah, as a whole, I think it's really just looking at what are the things we need to accelerate, elevate, kind of give a turbo boost to over the next five years.
So we've reviewed the comprehensive plan or the, I'm sorry, the strategic plan and the plan commission work program and looked at some particular items that could or could not be added to the comprehensive plan in this midterm review. So I guess what I would ask is that the commission members go through the action plan and, and see what changes you think we should be making to those action plans or any other part of the, the comprehensive plan. For example, I would suggest that we do include something about form-based codes, boundary agreements. Well, boundary agreements are going to be done the first quarter, but short-term rental ordinances and so on. And then the, and I know that we need to change the timeline for the master plan for the North Barstow Street area, which is another one that we will need to do. So I hope the commission members will have some concrete advice on, on what we need to do for updating the plan at our next meeting. And in the meantime, I hope you, if you are aware of people that, in the community who could offer us some information that might be helpful as we move forward here, invite them. Make a specific invitation for them to come on a specific date and talk about that because we have that, that time period at the beginning of the meeting where we can listen to any issues that the community feels we should hear. Commissioner Gregor.
Thank you, Chair Larson. Appreciate some of the clarification on this too from staff. I guess, you know, I believe the question I asked about specific, you know, items in here, and just to bring another one up for consideration, is under Table 15-4, the Parks Trails and Greenways Plan Actions, there's Parkland Dedication. Toward the bottom of that, that list, it says, consider adopting an ordinance requiring land or cash be dedicated with subdividing of residential lots. The target year was 2018, and it's marked as a three that says current work. Maybe I could get some clarification on that. Does that mean that that's about to be brought forward or, because that, that would seem like something that we might want to prod a little bit forward in this comprehensive plan discussion.
Sure. No, great question, specific to that item. Again, it's in your 2020 work program, so that's part of the rationale for identifying it as current work. That was started in part last year. I know this, this one too could be, we lost a staff member who was working on this directly. But also, again, with, with the pandemic and such, the priority of this at the city council level too was perhaps not as high through the strategic plan. It is identified in there though, so we do want to, exactly, that's a great candidate, perhaps, that, that color coding, that numbering might be inaccurate. We need to adjust that and then need to look at, you know, perhaps that's, you know, 2021 or 2022 and actually, you know, put a little bit more specificity into that item. And exactly, again, for lack of a better term, kind of elevate that and accelerate that work. So, yeah, that's exactly it. Not to take away from the chair's comments, but I believe that's kind of your request of the commission members for next time is to bring back information just like this.
Perfect. All right. With that, we will adjourn our work session. We'll reconvene at 7 o'clock for our regular plan commission meeting. Thanks, everyone.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689 or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.